Heavenly Father, once again, we are thankful unto you for your blessings and for the opportunity to live in a land where we can elect our officials that lead us and Lord this elected board and the mayor here tonight. We just pray that you'd grant them wisdom, courage, and strength to do what is needed to make Hope Mills the very best that it can possibly be. We do give you praise and honor and thank you for all that you've done for us and all your many blessings in the past, and we'll continue to look forward to you touching us in the future. Amen.
Happy Independence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have been issued for deletions in our agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second, I'm a favor team, by raising your right hand. And just for your information, we do have four. So if we risk one, we'll four in memory. It wouldn't be a four, but it's not because you have four. That is the end of this for our official business. Our agenda has been approved, and at this time, we have official comments. And this evening, I'll start with Commissioner Scaroa.
It's good to see more faces in the audience today. It's always good to have more people attend our Board of Commissioners meeting. Everyone have a good evening. Have, you know, enjoy.
Mayor Protem.
I would just like to say it's good to see everybody as well, and just make mention of our National Night Out on August the first, because I know that we will have that event on August the first from six to nine before our next board meeting. And I think that's all. Thank you. And wishing our fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Legg, well wishes to get well soon.
And August fourth?
August first.
Oh, August fourth is a day I need to. Is that on a Wednesday?
Friday.
August fourth?
August fourth is a Friday. Yes.
The day that we have, and I should have brought it with me, but we are having, it is being sponsored by Senator Applewhite, and it is a Senior Citizens. Let me turn it on. I think I'm heard, but I'll turn it on anyway. I'm usually loud, or I'll try not to talk too loud. It is a Senior Citizens Day that is going to be held at the Bill Crisp Center, and it is sponsored through also Mid-Carolina Council and Senior Tarheel Legislature. And this is not only information, but it's a good opportunity for our residents to see what the Crisp Center looks like, because we do, and it is available for our use. And the other thing that's important is they'll have all kinds of resources for 55 and over. So just encourage you to go there, and it, I will make sure that we get it out as far as on our website, or at least on a handout. But I didn't bring my calendar in, and it's my responsibility to share that, and I didn't do a good job.
I have it up on my phone. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., like you said, at the Bill Crisp Senior Center at 7560 Rafer Road, Evan, North Carolina.
What date is that?
That is August 2nd, Wednesday.
August 2nd. I knew it was in the middle of the week. But Senator Applewhite, when we met back in the fall, what the meeting was about was about supporting senior citizens in Cumberland County, and the Bill Crisp Center was chosen because it was a location that the whole county could go to, but it's also new. So that's the reason. So I just encourage you to go there if you want to see what's available for seniors, but also go there to see the center. And that's all I have. So, and again, welcome for your tenants here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and we look forward to a very effective and productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have an introduction of our ICON program, and ICON is a partnership with Cumberland County Schools, and this is for our interns that we have here, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
We're waiting on the second one, I think. Can you go check the back door?
We can skip to the next one.
She's unlocked.
Yeah, no, she says she's at the back door.
We go to the next thing and then they can.
She's not here.
Can we go to the next agenda item and then?
We'll just, we'll come back to that presentation. At this time, we have a presentation from the POW MIA Event Chair, Andrea Tebby. Did I say that right?
Yes.
All right. If you'll just make sure you hit the button up there, so it'll pick it, it'll pick it up for the recording taking place. It's on? It's on. I see. Great.
It's already on.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak about the North Carolina POW MIA Recognition Event. The Purple Heart Foundation of North Carolina has sponsored several Purple Heart dinners across the state for the past 10 years. Fayetteville has hosted five Purple Heart dinners, and I have been honored to co-chair for 2018, and then chair 2019, '21, and '22. The only reason we did not have one in 2020 is because of the pandemic. In 2022, we hosted a Gold Star Family Dinner in Durham, and we honored 110 Gold Star families from all across the state of North Carolina. The POW MIA issue is one that has affected countless families and individuals throughout our nation's history. We must remember those who remain missing and the families who continue to wait for their return. It is our duty to recognize their sacrifice and to support them in any way we can. This demographic is sometimes included in other events, but we seldom will you see a POW MIA event that stands on its own. The Purple Heart Foundation of North Carolina considered several cities to host this event. Of course, I was pushing very hard to have Fayetteville. The committee considered Goldsboro, Raleigh, Greensboro, Durham, Cary, Winston-Salem, and Wilmington. But ultimately, Fayetteville was chosen because of the support we have received here for all of our Purple Heart dinners. The Crown's Coliseum is where we will host the event, and their staff has been phenomenal in supporting the dinners each and every year. Our scheduled event will be held on Saturday, September 9th, and the, we're holding it in September because that is an important month for POW MIA families, as National POW MIA Recognition Day takes place on the third Friday of the month. This event will be the first of its kind for the state of North Carolina, and will include a memorial service to honor our special guests, as well as distinctive recognition for those who remain missing in action. A catered lunch will be provided to all attending, including veterans and their families. Each POW and MIA family will receive a thoughtful gift to acknowledge their sacrifice and to show that they are not forgotten. The Purple Heart Foundation of North Carolina is well underway planning the event that will honor these individuals and their families. The event is being planned, managed, and staffed on a completely volunteer basis. It is the Purple Heart Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), supported by the North Carolina Military Order of the Purple Heart, the statewide chapters of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, and our local Sand Hills chapter. Our website, which was donated by 219 Group, provides information on the Purple Heart and Gold Star family events, as well as our upcoming event. We are averaging over 800 community members at each and every one of our events. We are incredibly honored to be a part of these events and need help to make this upcoming event a success. If anyone is interested in volunteering, attending, or sponsoring the event, please feel free to contact anyone that's on the committee. I am one of the vice chairs, and Sergeant Major Ruby Murray is also a vice chair of the event. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Purple Heart, I'm sorry, the POW MIA event. And if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them now.
Do you want to have any questions about this event?
No comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, the next agenda item is a presentation of ICON program interns. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
First, I'd like to call Mrs. Chloe Bigger and Zanaya Matthews and the families to come up. And while they're coming up, I'll point, point out to you that the ICON program is a great program that we're working with, and it gives, gives us access to internships. And they actually have interns all around the entire county, but these are the two interns that we've had in Hope Mills for the past four to five weeks. They were initially interning in our planning department, but we gave them opportunities to actually engage with all the departments. So they show up regularly to our plan review meetings on Thursdays. They help with filing with HR. They've helped with Emily and I in the planning department. They've interacted with the police department, the fire department, our public works department. And we're putting together a really neat video to showcase their time here in Hope Mills. And I thought that as they got to the end of the program, I thought it'd be prudent to allow them to be presented to the board, to be, and they, they're always asking about their elected officials and things of nature. We've been in this room several times, but not in the official capacity of a board meeting where they're actually able to see how we do business. The one thing that I highlighted to them, that I wanted them to know, is how city government operates internally with all the different key pieces, and how they work well together. That's why I felt to be better suited, and, as opposed to just interacting with planning, let them see how the entire system works. And they've been a pleasure to work with. I guess, do you guys want to have, have anything to say? I know I'm going to put you guys on the spot.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Zanaya Matthews, from Old Jackford High School.
Thank you.
Which school do you represent?
Chloe, you're at... We got one Jackford, one Seventy-first. Now, I will say that the, it's a pretty cool program, because when we actually selected them, we did it through a draft. And so it's, it's companies from us to City Fayetteville, PWC, the airport, and we had the pleasure of interviewing about 140 interns. And there was a draft where we selected our top candidates and things of nature, based on the number of interns we wanted to have. And it got pretty competitive, where there were about six different entities that actually wanted the same interns, and that gave the interns an opportunity to choose the business. And so it's really, really, really cool to give them an opportunity to be in an interview setting, but for, for them to be able to select the municipality or the business that they want to do an intern with. And they did ask about future employment at the town, so I think we're doing something pretty cool.
And this is actually our second year?
This is our second year. Last year, we had interns with Parks and Rec, and so I'm looking forward to doing this on an annual basis for the town of Hope Mills.
And something I think is important is that this is not only a program through Cumberland County Schools, but workforce development gets involved in this also, because the key to it is making sure that we offer opportunities for our young adults, high school students, to understand the workings of, most people don't realize that oftentimes there's a job within the city that you could acquire and not have to do four years of college, or there might be a job here that they would be interested in, but they don't know what those jobs are. So I think this is not, I agree with you, this is not only a great opportunity, but I do appreciate the fact they've come in and gone to all the different departments. And rather than isolate in one, now you get to see there's so much going on that you might become a part of. So thank you for your good work, and we appreciate the opportunities, and especially that you chose the town of Hope Mills. So thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we sponsor a blue sponsorship for the POW MIA dinner or event.
The town to sponsor the...
Sponsorship.
He's gone back to the pre-
Yeah, I'm back. I'm sorry.
He's, 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 he's gone, he's gone back. What he-
I'm focused.
Yeah, he's focused. He's focused. And I guess the, the question would be is then those tickets could either be for the board or our Veterans Committee. Would that be appropriate?
I think it would. We'll, I'll talk to them to look at how many tickets and things of that nature. Is it a table, or?
Yeah, it's reserved seating. The blue was what Commissioner McLaughlin was-
Okay.
That's McLaughlin. Commissioner, that's McLaughlin. That's McCray, Lord. Commissioner Mitchell was recommending the blue, because that way we could have-
Six tickets, yeah.
Yeah, you could have representation, and, and we'd make sure this was representation that would attend, so that we would have that table with six.
I'll have our PIO reach out to Commissioner Scaroa and Mr. Mitchell to see who in the veteran community is willing to go, or interested to go, and then you guys will be along with that.
Okay.
I'll do that first thing in the morning.
The motion would be to do the blue sponsorship. Do we have a second on that motion?
I guess it would depend on whether or not.
No, we're still doing six.
You'd still have six tickets if, so.
And I would like to add, you may want to just say sponsor, because if the number gets high, you have eight tickets for the home of the free, and 10 tickets because of the, of the brave. So if there's-
All right.
An interest more than six, I think you may be better off just saying that we make a motion to approve it.
Do the survey.
Yeah, to approve the sponsorship.
Well, I mean, that motion to just say sponsor it.
Okay. So a motion to sponsor and second. And then all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. So we will, we will be there, okay? You're so welcome. Thank you. All right. We have no public hearings this evening. Do we have any, I do not have any public comments. No public comments. The consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to new business? If not, to have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first item on, there's, there is no old business. The first item on new business is consideration of acceptance of a contiguous annexation request of 32.44 acres in Sheffield Farms Phase 6, A 2023-07. Any, any questions about that, or any?
At, at this point, you're only authorizing me to, to check the sufficiency of the application if you choose to move forward with it.
I'll make that motion to accept annexation petition and adoption resolution R 2023-21 directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition.
Okay, and I have, have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have consideration of setting a public hearing for Petron Mark's annexation, A 2023-06, by passing resolution R 2023-20. And so this would be-
This will be authorizing the public hearing at the meeting on the 7th.
So the August 7th?
Yes.
So you'll be setting the date is August 7th, and that would be, the time for that would be at 7:00 p.m. So do I have a motion to set that hearing?
Motion to approve resolution R 2023-20, fixing a public hearing at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, August 7th, 2023, in Hope Mills Town Hall, on the question of annexation of A 2023-06 requested by petition filed pursuant of General Statute 160A-58.
Have a motion to have a second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a fee schedule amendment, park rental fees, marquee advertisement fees, and policy. That is behind Tab 4, but our Parks and Rec Director, Lamarko Morrison, is here to explain this to you.
Okay. As you all may well know, we've had an influx of requests for special events, but actually, the requests we were getting were more geared towards park rentals. The, the Golf View Greenway was never on the fee schedule, and there's several areas in the park that was on the fee schedule. So what this fee schedule does is set the price, which is consistent with the rest of our other fees, for general space at the municipal building, I mean municipal park, but also for Golf View Greenway and for the Vic Blinds Basketball Court. So those are three different areas that people have requested rentals for, but didn't have a fee schedule attached to it. So, and I'd be happy to take any questions. Also, this also sets a fee schedule for advertisement for the marquee.
Man, I know I should have called you and told you about these questions I have. Just kidding.
Do we have any questions in reference to this change in our fee schedule?
So, so for, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So for the birthday amount, announcement, you only get one day? You can't have a birthday month?
I think, I think the way Megan and, and I came up with it, you can have several, you can have several days and several different, you know, five-second displays of it, but a whole month, that might be a little excessive.
If they're willing to pay for it, they say.
You know, if you're willing to pay for it, it can get a little expensive, but yes, we'll entertain it.
One day, $25, right, for one image?
Yes.
So we'll take that. If they want to pay for a whole month, we'll take it.
Absolutely.
You can get a, you can get a week per image for $85. You get a reduced rate the more you use it.
Right.
So as you, if you look at the fee schedule, you know.
Now, we might get calls of people tired of seeing your birthday on there.
Their birthday went on the first.
So, any questions in reference to?
I'd also like to point out, pay attention to the calendar in that packet as well. That's something we've been talking about for quite some time, in terms of our efforts to streamline events, so that there are no duplications. So that calendar will be updated every fiscal year, but that's attached to this as well.
And in addition to that, I didn't do it this month, but next month, I will bring forward a presentation of all of our events to kind of give you all an idea ahead of time of what we're thinking. We, we, we took surveys, and we listened to the citizens, so we got a couple ideas that we want to bring forward to you, and let you all know as we plan for the Christmas parade and the 4th of July next year, we have, we have a couple things we want to run by you as far as make-up dates for fireworks, things of that nature. So.
Yes. Question. There's a limitation on the number of announcements that can be on the digital board. Do, because we have to make sure. If we have those limitations-
I think there's space, I think Megan said there's space for like eight per day, and so it'd have to be on a rotating basis.
And not on that, and it's got to be based on first come, first, basically, they got to understand that.
Yep.
Because if not, there'll be conflict.
Absolutely.
I, I do have a question in relation to the, well, first, I'll be expecting Commissioner Mitchell and Scaroa to post my birthday announcement in October, for 15 days, but anyway. The, the, before we come back with your calendar, is there any way we can have the committees meet, the committee chairs to meet before, so we can kind of like build our calendar together?
Yeah, we can do that. We, I mean, it was, it was my, and I definitely want to come back with, with our ideas in August, but no, no rush. We just want to give you all enough time to let you all know what we're doing, so you can tell us whether you like our plans, or whether we need to go back to the drawing board. So we can definitely, we can-
And I think what Commissioner Mayor Protem McCray was saying, that coincides with streamlining with the calendar, because now you're having these meetings with the chairs of all the committees, so that if there's an opportunity to partner with two or three committees doing one event, then we have the ability to identify that.
And also not to overschedule, because what we found that the committees want to do, and so what we're ending up with is, you know, events back to back, or even-
Yep.
Close to the same day. And so if we do have them meeting and bringing forth their ideas, then that one calendar would even be more effective, because you'd have them all on there. So, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
How soon can we get it done? We need to get a timeline on the calendar ASAP, so we can get this moved forward and pushed on.
I think, I think we're going back and forth with Dr. McCray about trying to, we're trying to get all the committees together and trying to get these schedules. I think HPC and the Appearance Committee. It's been kind of tough getting those two schedules to job, but we're still trying to work to have-
Have a primary day and alternate day. That way, you have to meet twice, you have to meet twice, but what, we don't need to keep pushing this. Hey, give them a date and time to be there.
And we might even look at doing something virtual that can't come to the meeting.
If they can't make it, they got, they have, they have a vice. The vice be there for them.
We've done this before. We did, we invited the chair. If the chair can't attend-
The vice.
The vice chair. And then what you do is, if somebody else wants to come with them, fine, because the representative would be either the chair or vice chair, and then do a Google Calendar and give them several days and, and make it so that, you know, we've met during the day, in the evenings, whenever, but the idea being that we need to do this, and I agree with-
I'll send out a couple invites. I'll send out three dates, and then, and then whoever can't make it hasn't been sent alternate dates.
Because they could send somebody from their committee.
I just thought about it. Don't even need alternate dates. You know why they're a committee? There's at least six to seven people on the committee. They need to be prepared to answer-
Somebody could come.
To represent their committee. If they ain't prepared, so be it. I guess they won't be represented. But the bottom line is, we have a date, we picked it, either show, or you don't be involved.
And, and, I'm sorry.
I just have one question. Do you have this calendar on Outlook, like, so I can import it to my calendar kind of thing?
I want to say we do. I know we got it in PDF format. I think that, I think they did make it on Outlook. We can probably share the link with everybody.
It's on Outlook. Look, you can, yeah, you can share it with us. And I only say that because I know that in October, the Historical Committee does something for Old Mill Day. I know you all do something for Fall Festival, and the Prime Overs, we usually do something for their anniversary. So I only, I wanted to make sure we were not. Maybe we could combine and maybe do something together-
That's what we're thinking.
Instead of all of us having something separate in the month of October. And I know that December is another month where everybody seems to kind of do something separate, and I know that it seems very far away, not so far away. So those were some really peak times that we have coming up that I thought it would be best-
You're right. I mean, and especially for Christmas, and as we start thinking about the Christmas in Hope Mills, I know his, the Historic Committee does some things, and the Appearance Committee does decorations, so it'd be a perfect timing for us to just coordinate and just all coordinated effort.
Yes. And if all possible, I'm looking at the calendar for the month of August. We're looking at from the 7th, the 7th is our first meeting, so from the 7th to the 18th is enough time for us to schedule a meeting within that timeframe, which will also meet prior to our next board meeting, and which will probably have something put together.
Yep.
Roger that.
Can I, can I raise, I hate to be the lawyer here, but I do need to raise a First Amendment concern with, with paid advertising on the sign. We cannot regulate content, so if we're going to pick and choose which messages get displayed, I may want to tweak the policy a little bit.
Yes.
Because I don't want it to be just blanket, we reserve the right to reject an advertisement. We need to make sure we're doing it with some consistency and some, you know, predetermined, you know, non-content-based thoughts before we-
Thanks for that. Yeah, we-
There's another one. Can I add to that?
Yes.
If for any reason we see anything that's about to be advertised that could be a possible issue, we refer to the lawyer. Period.
Right. And, and that's, that's why I want to make sure, you know, we've got some standard in place ahead of time, so that we're not trying to judge piece by piece. Do we like this one? Do we not like that one?
That's right.
That could be an issue, so we'll, we'll work on.
Yeah, our intent was mainly for, you know, businesses and birthdays. So-
And we may just want to limit it to that. That might be the way-
Work it out.
Or something like, we'll, we'll tweak it.
Put it together and let us know.
Do you have a comment?
My comment is related to the calendar. There is a section on the website, the town's website, for Parks and Rec's calendar that never gets updated.
Thanks for letting me know.
If you put that, all that stuff will go on there, great, and then everybody can see it anytime.
Go to the link.
Access it through events.
Okay.
That would be, that would be appropriate, and then that, that way anybody could get it.
So we have a site that's, you said there's a site for Parks and Recs that's never updated?
The calendar.
It's a calendar. It's a calendar. They update. They put a lot of stuff on the website, but they, there is a calendar spot. If you scroll down to the bottom of the website, it's got town meetings and events. Then there's another section that says Parks and Recreation, and then there's one that says public meeting notices. I maintain the town meetings and events calendar, and then I put up the public meeting notices, and Parks and Recreation, only thing that's on there right now is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, because I put it on there.
Commissioner Scaroa, just for you and you only, when I was in the military-
Oh, Lord.
You're thinking like I'm thinking, but that, that's a project for the new admin guy to-
Yeah, maintenance information plan would be the way to go. You know, come with the set time that it must be maintained, and, you know, it must be updated and maintained, you know, maintain the maintenance of it. And that would take care of that problem.
Will do.
But, but if, if also, if there is a feature in Outlook, because not just, that, I know Jane, your, the stuff that you put automatically goes on our calendar, but it could be Parks or Rec, anything. If it's shared in Outlook, it will automatically populate on our calendars.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of, I don't think it's that difficult to do, but not just the events for Parks and Rec, but for us, for the town at all. You can, all of those events-
Just everything.
I know you got this.
Yep, I got it.
Now, what I'm asking, I'm asking the attorney, do we need to move to accept the fee schedule, but keep the marquee schedule off until you have an opportunity to tweak that schedule?
I think that would be-
Not necessarily the pricing of it, but the wording, because they could get somebody requesting to put something on the marquee prior to your making some other comments.
I think we should reserve allowing people to start renting it until we've, we've tweaked the policy slightly.
Okay.
Okay, so what-
But I'm fine with adopting the fee schedule. I think it's fine.
All right. Good. Can we make the motion that reads something like, make- make a motion to approve the fee schedule with the implementation of new guidance and guidelines for the policy?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
That's my motion there.
And that would, but I think we need to specify that would just be for the marquee. That way, these other fees could be instituted.
Correct, right.
Okay, for the marquee. So the motion would be to approve this with the fee schedule approved, but we'd need more guidance from the attorney as far as how that is going to be regulated.
Roger that.
For the marquee.
So the marquee rental will not start until we have an adopted policy on that, but we can go ahead and adopt all of the fee schedules.
Thank you.
So I have a motion, so I can have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, next item on our agenda would be the manager's report. Do we have any additions to the manager's report? Or do we have anyone that has a question for Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Mike.
No additions, I would just like to highlight a few things on there. National Night Out is August 1st from 6:00 to 9:00. I think we should, everybody should come out and be really cool. It's a partnership with the Chamber, Hope Mills Chamber, where all of the local businesses will be vendors. We have a dunk tank that we're inviting any and all elected to participate. I think Commissioner Scorola is going to get inside.
I already volunteered because I'm the one that's picking up the dunk tank, so I will be the first in the chute into the dunk tank. It's going to be hot outside, so I won't have any issues.
Are you pointing to the rest of us, you want us in here too?
Well, I'm going to volunteer to look.
What if it's a fundraiser for the town, you know?
We also have our, what I call our Crown Jewel. August 4th is the John W. Hodges Public Safety Center Dedication and Ribbon Cutting. That is from, at 1:00 p.m., it will be official remarks. We're going to do a tour, a guided tour of the Public Safety Center afterwards. August 24th is our town hall with NCDOT. I want to make sure everyone is aware of that because as we all deal with the median and utility relocation, things of nature, DOT is coming to update us on about the eighth most important DOT projects coming on this region. And finally, what I think is a really cool idea, Chief Jollinger is unveiling in August a really cool program called Walk with a Cop. And it's tied to community policing, and so beginning in August, the Hope Mills Police Department will kick off their Walk with a Cop initiative in which groups of Hope Mills police officers will be staggered along Hope Mills Park Walking Trail. Each day, officers will politely ask citizens if they would mind company while they walk. During the walk, officers will engage citizens to determine whether there's anything they need from the PD or would like to see in the future. This is a great opportunity to build and strengthen the relationships between our police officers and our community. So please look at the manager's report when we post it on our admin page because they do have the dates, they will be out, and the times, and they'll be along the track. That's it for me.
That's a great idea, too. All right, so now, there's the next, of course, will be reminders for our meetings, and those reminders are on your calendars you just received. We do have, of course, I added the August 2nd thing with the senior citizens. I think that's something we wouldn't necessarily put on our calendar, but it is important for our community. And then lastly, the diversity, equity, inclusion training, there's another one of those trainings on July 26th. Is that the correct date on that's on here?
I think July 26th is the next one for PD, I think Fire Department is tomorrow.
Okay.
Have we all completed the training?
Not everybody, I think we're still waiting on Marley and the mayor. And we do have two in August, we have about three left. We have two for Parks and Rec and one for PD, and I think the last second one for police.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any other questions for our town manager?
I do have a question. Can you send us a digital copy of that NCDOT Town Hall meeting flyer that you have in the, you have like a smaller picture?
Yeah, I can do that right now.
Okay, thank you.
But I do have one thing, I just want to say, pass the word around to all the citizens in Hope Mills that the manager's report is a little more in-depth than your previous manager's report. Covers a lot of detail about what's going on, and it is going to improve and get better to cover more information about what's going on in the town. That will prevent all the miscommunication, misinformation, missharing of information. Check the town page, check the manager's report, check your agenda, and you will get a lot of information that will answer a lot of questions that you might have that you have not been getting in the past. Thank you.
And I think too, just to draw their attention to the reports that come from each department. I know one thing people have questioned about when we're paving streets and what's happening with streets. And if you'll notice in our, especially our last agenda, it actually listed where they'd been putting repairs and asphalt. And so there's a way of knowing what's going on just within this packet. So when you get the agenda packet, don't just read the agenda opening, go behind the tabs because that's where you get, especially the reports. It lets you know what each department's doing and how much they've covered. So if there's ever a question about accountability of what they're doing, it's there. And sometimes you'll be amazed at actually what our departments have done.
And I would like to add, one of the reasons why we turned it into a graphic is because it allows us to pull it out of the actual packet and post it in its own space on our admin page. And so what Commissioner Mitchell was talking about is, starting next month, you're going to have a two-page report that lists the update on all the upcoming projects, whether it's a project that's actually being done by us, or if it's new businesses being brought in Hope Mills, what's the status of Freddy's, things that we, the community has seen us approve but may not have started construction. You'll know if they're still in permitting, or if they've actually been issued a building permit and they're just waiting to identify the GC. So it'll be a lot of information, when is Wingstop coming, when is Sheet's going to be complete and things of that nature? So there's a wealth of information, but doing it as a graphic allows us to explode it out and put it on social media in a form that's a little bit more digestible than the packet.
There's one thing I want to add. For those of us that require glasses, you're going to need a 3.75 or a 4.25 to read it, okay?
That's it for me, though.
All right, at this time, we're down to staff comments. Do we have any staff comments? Anything, everybody's good over there? All righty. Also, is there any comments from up here, anybody else have anything?
Good meeting.
All right, so at this point in time, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And of course, all in favor? Very good. Good evening, thank you for being here, and I will have to tell you, this is probably the shortest meeting that I've ever been involved with. And it's also been a very agreeable meeting, as you've noticed, everybody agreed on everything. Thank you for coming, and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
My goodness.